Experiencing some technical difficulties with our microphones, but it seems like they are now working. So, the time is 5:47 PM. I would like to call our work session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present, thank you. We have a number of items under Committee Business this evening. I will begin with the Administration Committee. We have one resolution for discussion, Resolution 18 of 2025. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 18 of 2025, a resolution appointing Ms. Cheyenne Johnson to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, if you wouldn't mind joining us? Okay, good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening. If you wouldn't mind taking a few minutes to introduce yourself, please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me and thank you for the invitation. My name is Cheyenne Johnson. I'm a local native to Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. And I went to school in North Carolina, the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. And currently, I am a commercial appraisal trainee for Rittenhouse Appraisals.
Thank you. What interests you in serving as a member of the Environmental Advisory Council?
Well, just after looking through the city website and looking at how I can be able to contribute my current knowledge within the commercial and residential real estate realm, I figured that being able to give back to the city that I'm from, this position would be able to offer me the leverage with, you know, getting to know everyone in city council and really understanding how my efforts can contribute to Harrisburg City itself and how I can continue to develop and provide different ways of doing things as far as how it increases our environment.
Thank you. So just for everyone's reference, I know we're all familiar with the Environmental Advisory Council, but just a refresh. Pursuant to Ordinance Number 6 of 2018, the Environmental Advisory Council, or EAC, was reorganized in order to better carry out the mission of providing information and a forum for discussing environmental issues impacting the city of Harrisburg. Pursuant to Section 2-509.2 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, the EAC shall be comprised of seven volunteer members, of which three are appointed by the mayor and four are appointed by city council. EAC members must be residents of the city of Harrisburg. EAC members are appointed to serve a term of three years unless otherwise removed. Your appointment shall be for a term commencing on April 8th, 2025 and expiring on April 7th, 2028. Just wanted to review that information for everyone's reference. I don't have any other immediate questions. I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues who may have some additional questions for you. I'd like to begin with our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for joining us and your willingness to serve in this capacity. Besides your knowledge in what you do currently, what's your passion for environmental studies or environment just in general, knowing what you know about our city?
I will definitely say, as far as my capacity of what I know and what I'm willing to learn would just be me conducting several different cleanups within the city with the Harrisburg Young Professionals and also doing it just as a subset in the neighborhood that I grew up in, which is Uptown Harrisburg. And then currently, where I also have family members that live off of Berry Hill Street. So recently, what, last year, where Berry Hill Street was completely destroyed by numerous trees in the neighborhood, I took it upon myself to be able to volunteer without any type of funds to be able to help my community in that capacity. And I just foresee myself in this position to be able to do that, but at a more intense level. I wouldn't say that I have all of the knowledge, right, to be able to say that I know how to do this or that, but I will say that I have the determination, the bear with, you know, the bandwidth to be able to do it and then just the passion behind being from this community and wanting to impact it in just the more intense way, in a progressive way, honestly.
Well, we thank you and I look forward to working with you further in this capacity. The first Hot Spot Saturday Cleanup will be the 19th for this month, so if you're available, please come out. Love to see you a part of that initiative.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Excuse me, thank you, President Bowers. No, not, not, I don't really have a question. I'll just give you my sentiments. Again, as Councilman Rodriguez said, thank you for your willingness to serve. He pretty much answered my question and I liked the transparency and not saying that you know all the things, but I love the ambition and the willingness to learn, the willingness to serve, but most importantly, the passion. So, that's all I have. So, thanks for you even stepping up to the plate for this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. Hello, Ms. Johnson. Thank you for being here. I don't have any questions. I'm just want to say thank you for being willing to serve on this board, volunteer your time and being open to learn new things and I'm just being willing to get out in your community and be a part of it. So, thank you and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, me too.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. I don't have any questions for you. I'm eager to hear the passion in your voice and I look forward to working with you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
No questions. Welcome and thank you for your service and your willingness and passion to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Yeah, just whether, any potential conflicts of interest between this appointment and the roles you currently have?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question for me, please?
Yes, if you anticipate any potential conflicts of interest between this position and the roles you currently have?
No, ma'am.
Councilwoman Daniels?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear any.
She said she, no, she did not have any conflicts.
Okay, that doesn't mean I have any question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us this evening. We do have one caveat. Before we vote on this resolution, there is a statement of financial interest that is needed on file for 10 days prior to any action that can be taken by this body. So, we will follow up with you again regarding the form and once it's completed, our 10-day clock will begin.
So, I currently have the physical form with me filled out and then I also did return that document to Mr. Michael here. So, you are in receipt of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So, Resolution 18 of 2025 will remain in committee once the 10-day timeframe has exhausted. That concludes the business of the Administration Committee. Next, we have the Budget and Finance Committee. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. The Budget and Finance Committee will be discussing Resolution 19 of 2025. Mr. Parker, could you read it into the record for me, please?
Resolution 19 of 2025, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Conrad Siegel Incorporated to continue to provide actuarial services consisting of other post-employment benefits, valuations as required by the government accounting standards and Board Statement Number 75.
Thank you very much. It looks like we have the Finance Department here to give us a presentation along with some handouts. So, whenever you guys are ready, if you could introduce yourselves and give us an overview.
Bob Kennick, Finance Director, and I'm kind of under the weather, so I'm going to let Brian McCutcheon, our Accounting Manager, do most of the talking for us tonight.
Okay, thank you, Bob. I'll do my best. Good evening, Budget and Finance Committee. Thank you. Vice President Green, city council members. As Vice President Green mentioned, the handout that Mr. Parker can distribute, it reflects one of the Excel file schedules that Cedric's helping me out with this evening. There it is, thank you. And what, the, the firm that has historically provided the related service here's services is Conrad Siegel and the actuary. And this is the city's other post-employment healthcare benefits, certain benefits for city retirees. And we don't determine these numbers. It's, it, obviously, it's determined through the services provided by Conrad Siegel because it's actuarially based and there's a lot of calculation that goes into it. And it relates to the, predominantly the medical benefits that are available for retirees. And there's three main groups, including police, fire, and the non-uniform group. And the non-uniform group also has a further breakdown of management and union employees. So, the first part of this schedule reflects the top part. I thought it would be good to just try to give you an overview because this liability is not, it's a huge liability, for one thing, but it's not, of course, one that the city has to pay, you know, on any one payment or check run. It's just an ongoing liability that's calculated, that needs to be included in the city's annual financial statements. The report that Conrad Siegel provides ranges between 20 and 25 pages and it lists all the groups and it has all the trigger effects of when people were hired and when they retired. And that determines what the eligible benefits are to be. Some perspective, the OPEB liability is laid out there and they're all based on, and this is in the actuary world, they do the valuation as of January 1st and they do it every other year. So, that's why you're seeing even, even actuary or valuation dates that begin, for example, January 1 of 182022. What's being brought before you tonight is going to be the evaluation they are prepared to prepare, that'll be dated 1/1 of 2024. What's interesting on the liability is you can see back at the end of 18, it was around 130 to 136 million. And when we came, when we come down into the middle, the middle section there, the tremendous increase in the liability of 157 million, 177 million. There's a tie-in, of course, related to the health pandemic that occurred and just medical expenditures that have increased in cost. And, I mean, as you know, throughout the year, on the budget side, this is not a budget item, but, but it, there is budget. We pay, the city pays its healthcare claims as we go throughout the year and we have those significant expenditures and some of the claims can be quite extraordinary at times. So, the liability at the end of 2023 has, you know, I hesitate to say calm down, but it's, it's, it's back to where it was in the early liability balance dates on this schedule. It's not as, you know, not as nearly as extraordinary. The middle section of this schedule is participants' data and I just carved out, again, this is taken from the valuation report, to see total participants and of those total participants, the people that are retired. So, it's, again, you're looking at the total of over 700 individuals and that would include not just city employees, but eligible spouses and also eligible dependents. So, the difference would be, there's total there and retired, the difference would be the active city participants, those currently employed by, by the city. And just for a sense of, if you, if you flatline the most recent liability balance of 138 million and if you divide that over 748 participants, that roughs out to about $185,000 per participant as an estimated projection. Now, that's not, I don't, I wouldn't want to bank on that because I'm just totally averaging that, but that at least gives us a sense of how we can translate such a large liability balance. So, that's the participant data and again, it's reflective as of the valuation date, which is a date that starts the beginning of each of those every other year periods. Lastly, at the bottom is Conrad Siegel's fee and I thought it would be good for you, you might have thought what, what we've paid them in the past and this illustrates that. What they do, when they do the valuation, they will be doing at the start of the year and they project forward what they anticipate will happen. So, for the 1/1/24, 2024 valuation coming up, you know, for the year that just ended, that's the bulk of their, their time. They craft the report and that's the $14,000 portion of the current proposed fee. Then, this time about next year, they'll come back and they'll just simply update that same document and of course, it's not as much significant time, so that's why that fee is so much lower for the second half of the contracted period. So, that, again, that was my attempt to try to summarize this the best I could and I can stop right there if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. It's pretty straightforward to me. I don't really have any questions. I'll open up to my colleagues. I'll start to my far right with Councilwoman Daniels. Any questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis?
No questions.
Thank you. President Bowers?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls?
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you. No questions for me.
Thank you. And Councilman Jones, any questions?
No questions.
Well, it looks like we don't have any questions regarding this. Thank you for the presentation and kind of giving us the overall of how the process works and what it's showing us. So, we appreciate that and thank you for being here tonight. That's it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I will recommend this be moved to our next legislative agenda. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our final Committee Business this evening lies with the Public Safety Committee. I will defer to our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, President Bowers. Is anyone here from fire? No? I didn't see. Did he say, I mean, what did he say? Let me turn. How do we?
This is just a transfer of a vehicle from a paid fire company to a volunteer. Volunteer fire companies are qualified where we don't have to put it out for bid for public property as a potential recipient. It's a very old vehicle. I think the number's like $2,000, something like that.
Yeah, I was just wondering, with no one here, you know, to represent it, so I just wonder how we proceed with that?
Decide if that, what I just said is good enough or not. Or you could then ask them to come back, no, on, or you could ask them to come back and just suspend the rules on Tuesday, next time you meet and have them, because they missed tonight, to do it that.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that.
Right.
So, just.
But it's pretty perfunctory, this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
Apparently, they need a truck.
So, you know, we'll put Resolution 17 into committee?
Well, I think if you refer it for a vote, you can always withdraw it if they don't come in for the next meeting. So, you get to the next meeting, you suspend the rules.
Right.
And then they talk to them. So, that's not for a committee, that's for a vote.
Okay, yeah, so I just asked to move it, Resolution 17, to the legislation session? All right. President Bowers? Oh, still me?
It's still you. It's still you.
One more, one more, one more. So, we have Resolution 20. Mr. Parker, can you please read that into the record?
Yes. A resolution authorizing and approving the submission of a petition to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board for an exemption of a specific downtown area of the city of Harrisburg from the Board's regulations regarding amplified music being heard off the licensed premises in favor of enforcing the city's adopted noise control and abatement ordinance.
All right, and we have, you guys can go ahead and introduce yourself and, I mean, yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Thomas Carter and my captain, Captain Terry Willen, and my criminal.
Okay. So, you want to explain a little bit about what you have there, Resolution 20? Just give us a quick overview of it.
Sure, thank you. Can everybody hear me? All right. Like Mr. Parker said, Resolution 20 of 2025 is a resolution authorizing and approving submission of a petition to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board for the exemption of specific downtown area of the city of Harrisburg from LCB regulations regarding amplified music coming from licensed premises in favor of enforcing the city's adopted noise control ordinance, which is City Ordinance 3-343. I have a little bit of history here. I had a brief conversation with Councilman Jones there. Apparently, I was, I read this thing wrong, that I have, but I had it as Resolution 20-2025 was moved by Councilman Jones and seconded by Councilman Rodriguez on March 24th. At the last legislative session, it was moved to this evening's session for the purpose of discussion. That's, I just had the piece of paper that I was forwarded, so I'm not quite sure what happened with that, but either way. I'm prepared to move on.
Let's go, let's go.
City Ordinance, a little bit of a history about it. City Ordinance 3-343 was first adopted by city council on November 9th of 1999 by City Ordinance Number 42 of 1999. It was amended in its entirety on June 5th of 2007 by Ordinance Number 4 of 2007 and subsequent amendments were noted, were applicable. Last version was moved by Councilwoman Green, rather, and seconded by Councilman Mattson in 2019. It was passed by city council on December, December 17th of 2019. That version expired here this, this past January on the 1st. This version, as presented, has no change in verbiage or boundary at this time.
Excuse me, can you move the microphone closer to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Like I said there a little bit earlier, this current version has no change in verbiage or boundary at this time. I could just go over the boundaries. If you can imagine, the western boundary is Front Street from the railroad bridge north to Forrester Street. The east boundary is North 7th Street from Forrester, south to State and then south on 5th Street to Market Street. It's right around the bridge there where it kind of curves around. The northern boundary is Forrester Street and the south boundary is the railroad tracks, like where the trucks are always getting stuck down in there, then eastbound. I have a little bit about usage since 2007 of the city ordinance. Now, this was not for bars specifically, but this also covers loud noise due to construction and things like that where it's not like an emergency, it's outside of the bounds and also people playing loud music in vehicles. So, we had three different RMS systems where we keep track of these numbers over the years. So, between January of 2007 and October of 2015, about a eight-year period, 455 citations were issued citywide for violations of the ordinance. That's not just bars and that's the entire city.
Can you say that number again for me?
455.
Citations?
Citations.
This from the vehicles or establishments?
Everything. Everything, houses, vehicles, and I'm sure there's a couple of bars in there. The system that I was looking at is kind of antiquated. We don't use it anymore and I wasn't going to go through 455, you know, citations just.
So, that's the number.
Right. And then between November 15th, I'm sorry, November of 2015 and October of 2024, there were 109 citations issued for violations of the city ordinance. Four of those were in the downtown area alone, whether it's coming from vehicles. I know of very few bars that have actually been cited with this because you need like five different occasions, you know, until you start citing people with it, but that, that's all we have at this point.
Okay, you got anything to add, Commissioner? So, this may be a question for legal, you know, from, from the original ordinance that Captain Willen just referred to, which was created in 2099?
We're not quite there yet.
1999, I apologize. We still here that long, boy, I tell you. 1999, this originated. There, the ordinance changed, I mean, well, the language hasn't changed, but some, for some reason, the map has. Can you tell me why the map has changed?
Sure. The map has actually changed at least three times over the years. Council, and part of this is because where establishments change. So, part of what we have to do when you authorize this is we go to LCB with an app with a petition and it lists every, everyone with a liquor license within the boundary. At one point, this council voted to move the lines all the way up to Harris Street where the American Legion was. At one point, they had the Millworks when they first opened and H-Mac when they first opened. They had some, what I'll call, were perceived as nuisance bars where council purposely moved the line to the other side of the street, so the nuisance bar wasn't protected under, under this ordinance. I can't remember frankly, why it moved back to the old boundaries, other than we were, when we finally got there, we were heading to COVID. You know, I just don't know what the thinking was at the time. I just have no recollection of that. And I don't know whether that was a police request or a mayoral request. I don't know.
Okay.
So, you know that there's a request from 3rd Street to add them to it. The requirement to satisfy LCB is that the boundary has to be, it's got to close on the map. It can't, like, have little offshoots.
Okay, so.
So, it's got to be contiguous.
So, I'm looking at Resolution 85 of 2017, which seems to be the most recent map. The language is still the same. The map is all the way over to Harris Street as you just mentioned?
Yeah, that was voted on motion by motion by this council. That was changed from the original to that, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the point that I'm making. And so, you know, I think with those businesses that you just mentioned, Millworks, now you have the district, you also have H-Mac and if we're in the business of trying to revitalize our city and I think those areas still play an intricate part in our, in our city, you know, economically developing and having things for people to do. So, you know, I will be making a recommendation that we go back to Resolution 85 of 2017.
So, some of those streets have no establishment anymore. So, if you would not mind, if you would like the amendment, what we will do is get the list of licensees for a bigger territory, so the council can see.
Everything.
Who's there and then, you know, and then you have options. The one thing to remember, it's got to close. The line's got to close.
Right.
But like right now, there is nothing up on Harris Street anymore. That, that was.
Right, that was old, old, post-733, yes.
Where I think Councilwoman Reed was the president.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You do have the Latino bar right there, so.
But I think it didn't go that far that time, right? That, I think it, I missed it. But I think it didn't go that far that time, right? I think I missed it.
Anastasia, yes. It's still there. It's right on, right.
So we could get, we could get an LCB thing for everything, I'd say, this side of the railroad tracks in the city of Harrisburg boundaries, and you can decide how far you want the boundary to go.
Okay, so now what do we have to do for that?
We go back to another committee meeting. So, and this is a process because after council votes, it then has to be petitioned, and then it waits for LCB to set up a hearing. The hearing actually happens in this chamber. You know, it's publicly advertised.
So this resolution will remain in committee as well?
Yeah, this would, I think, remain in committee for this request. We will get that. Our liaison for a lot of the liquor licensing is actually Mike Hughes in the tax office, and there's a liaison with the police bureau. So we will get the data, and it's really just a data question.
I think that's fair. I think that's fair. Thank you.
And we'll have it in time for your next legislative, next work session.
So, yeah, leave this in committee then. Yeah. I ask that the Resolution twenty of two thousand and twenty-five remain in the Public Safety Committee.
Can I just ask one question about it? With the public hearing, what you're saying is that community members will be able to come in and just speak about the changing of the map or any concerns they have?
In the past, sometimes this map has, both at the council level, more at the council level than elsewhere, have resulted in actually a number of people showing up to discuss it. And so, so like, if you move it to a place and there's a location that they've been complaining about, you most likely get those neighbors coming in saying, I want you to cite them. I don't want you to, right? But our police can still cite them for noise, but right now, it's basically the state troopers who have authority over the liquor license owners. So this lets our guys go in there for what they need to do.
But I get it too, because you're right, and I really didn't consider that about, you know, we're redesigning the city anyway, and some of these establishments aren't there, but, like the Legion, but you still do have Anastasia.
You have new ones, yeah. Take yourself to new next to the Vietnamese restaurant Riley, I think.
Fifteen hundred. They got rooftops, so we want to make sure that we're covering all that area.
We'll get you the list.
All right. Any other questions, councilmembers?
Yeah, I think, were you saying, is there a new establishment next to, what, Vietnamese Garden?
Yeah, there's, one just opened, yeah.
Yeah, there's a new bar, yeah, three oh six, yeah, the sports bar. So I think we got, there's so many things to include. And you're like, the map has to close. I'm like, just circle the whole city. I don't, like, how's this look? There's so many new places. Yeah, I know, I know. I know, 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 but it's just so many new places opening. It's like.
Yeah, I suggest you don't want Cameron Street. I would just suggest.
No, no, no. There used to be one on there. No, yeah. Thank you.
There's probably one establishment, the new establishment down there.
Yeah, there's a lounge down there. On Cameron?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lounge down there.
I've lost track. Savannah's is down there.
My question, before you go, President, I mean, Vice President Green, my question would be, again, as, again, you know, we have a lot of open spaces and things up along Sixth Street, and a lot of people, you know, we, I'm looking to hope that there are new businesses that will be coming into these areas. So I guess we only can just close it where we see fit right now, and then is there a way that we need to adjust it? Do we have to wait until this one expires and then come back and revisit it again?
The answer is, I don't know that without looking at the regulation. So the LCB regs have been really modified a lot during COVID because it made it a little easier for outdoor transfers, for off-site beverages. So I would have to see if they change that part of the regulation. But as long as they, in the, if you have a big footprint, as long as they're in that footprint, they're covered. Right? That's, it doesn't, they don't have to be on the list now to be covered.
Got you. Vice President Green?
Yes, just for clarification. So the map that we're using right now is from December seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen? That's the current map?
Right, and it was approved by LCB September twenty-twenty.
Okay. And the map that you're referring to is the one from November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, correct?
Absolutely.
All right. So the current map that we're using is the same map that's being proposed in this new resolution, correct?
Yes.
All right. So just making sure that for the public, everyone understands what, where we're at now and what we're looking to do possibly.
I will note in the course of the two thousand and seventeen hearing, because we only asked for two years, and it was a very unusual map from their point of view, that they actually asked us the next time to apply for longer, so they didn't have to keep redoing the hearings.
Got it. Got anything?
Thank you. Just one question. Thank you for being here this evening. You mentioned five occurrences, five occurrences before someone is cited. Is that the bars only, or are you talking about just?
That's written in the language of the ordinance.
So houses, bars, anyone that's?
No, that, the way that I interpreted this was, was that's for the establishments.
Oh, for establishments. Okay.
At least that's the way I interpreted it.
For, for, you talking about for this one?
Yes. For the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. So they'll come back now once this is?
Right, I think you just talked about the practicalities of the boundary for the police purposes.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome.
President Bowers?
Thank you. We will now move forward with our meeting agenda. The next item is public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section. Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Hunt, and I live on State Street. Yesterday, I came down to the city, and I realize we don't have enough parking enforcement people. However, when they are out doing parking enforcement, I gave the mayor four cars in my neighborhood that have been getting tickets repeatedly that don't have current registrations on their cars or inspections on their cars. And what I'd like for the people who do do parking enforcement to make a note and give, I think Sergeant Wells? Officer Wells, the information, so these cars don't remain on the street week after week, getting tickets. Two of the cars that I noted had, one had an inspection in the year two thousand and twenty-two, one had one in two thousand and twenty-three. One was a wrecked car, and one had a flat tire. The other car was parked too close to the intersection of Nineteenth and State, where people have trouble getting out to sea. And that, now, after the neighbors saw that I was writing things down, there were four. There's only three of them today. But I'd like for the parking enforcement people to notify Officer Wells when there are abandoned cars in the neighborhood, instead of keep putting tickets on that nobody pays any attention to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Is there anyone else that would like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, the time is six twenty-six P.M. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.